Committee. And I'd like to welcome you to this virtual meeting. The required meeting, agenda and application materials are all available on the town website. Because in-person attendance at public meetings is likely to increase the risk of transmission of COVID-19, this hearing is being conducted in accordance with Governor Lamont's Executive Order Number 7B. Will the Town Planner please call the roll and explain the virtual meeting rules of the quorum and procedure for this meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Todd DuMay, Town Planner. Commissioner Giolito.
Present.
Commissioner Parsons Whitaker.
Present.
Commissioner Schweitzer.
Present.
Commissioner Crosby. I'll note for the record, Commissioner Crosby is here.
Mr. Crosby is present, sorry. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, Jeff Gabrin. Mr. Gabrin is also present. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Todd DuMay, Town Planner. For the record, I would like to note that we have a quorum of the committee. Committee members and town staff are participating via WebEx. Members of the public can view the meeting live on West Hartford Community Television or on West Hartford Community Interactive Comcast Channel 5 and Frontier TV Channel 6098 or at www.whtv.org. The meeting is also being recorded for on-demand viewing, which is available on the town website. Because of the virtual format of this meeting, there are some special rules and procedures that I need to cover before I begin. First, I ask that all participants please mute the microphones on your devices when you are not speaking. Second, pursuant to Executive Order 7B, all speakers must state their name and title each time they speak. Also, I will ask members of the committee and the applicant to not address other participants directly. Requests for additional information must be made through the chair. After you state your name, simply preference your question or comment with "through the chair." And when you are done, the chair will recognize the person who is most appropriate to respond. Although these practices may feel rigid and awkward, they will ensure the meeting is conducted in an orderly fashion and that members of the public who are listening can understand the discussion. I would like to thank everyone in advance for your patience. The new virtual format can be difficult to manage, but we remain committed to the principles of open and transparent government and will strive to ensure that every interested party has a meaningful opportunity to provide input. With that, the first matter on our agenda is 1340, 1344 New Britain Avenue. An eight to sixteen Berkshire Road application filed on behalf of 47 Pratt Street LLC, owner of 1340 and 1344 New Britain Avenue and eight to sixteen Berkshire Road. The stated purpose of the application is to request a change of the underlying development to 1.7 acres at the northeast corner of the intersection of New Britain Avenue and Berkshire Road from R61 Family Residence District to RM2 Multi-Family Residence District and request a special development district designation for a proposed 26-unit multifamily development along with associated site improvements, including parking, drainage and landscaping. The Drac's initial review was at its regularly scheduled meeting on October 15th. At that meeting, the Design Review Advisory Committee reviewed all aspects of the application and found most of them to be generally favorable. They did request that the applicant look at some additional architectural changes in response to certain comments on the building entrance elements and some other minor architectural detailing. With that, I'll turn it over to the applicant so they can begin with their presentation. While I'm doing that, I will share my screen with everyone. That includes the applicant's presentation, in particular, that highlights those areas that Drac asked for additional review. Mr. Hill, you can begin with your presentation.
This is Chris Hill, architect with Blue Moon Design. So I'll just go through the implementations slide by slide. Todd, did you by any chance have the plans in the slide group or?
For the record, Todd DuMay, yes. Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Hill. I do have the plans, however, I thought it was appropriate, since there are no changes, at least I'm not aware of any changes in the plans, to focus on the elevations to maximize use for time. What I could suggest that we start with, Mr. Hill, is starting with the largest element first, which is the entrance. I fast-forwarded to that and provided the Design Review Advisory Committee on this slide, the options that you sent in. Perhaps we start here and work our way back towards other detail elements.
So as you can see, this is Chris Hill again with Blue Moon Design. So we took the commission's recommendations and then did a few studies. We brought the brick all the way up to the eve and did a PVC treatment on the gables. I added the shutters to the windows and then there's some subtle variations in each one. We did a study showing all white for the trim treatments for the field and the trim applications. We did, I did a recessed brick just above the door in that one. It's just a half-inch recess in the brick detailing. On the next slide, the difference was I just eliminated the brick recess and then I did a color study just using the same gray as the field color for the gable, leaving the trim battens white. And then the last one to the right of that. Just looked at adding some minor corbling above the door. We did two courses and then a roll-out course about, just above that to align with the trim band of the deck. So those are the studies. And then actually, I took, I'm sorry, just under the eve, I did the course there rather than a trim band. I took the brick all the way up to the underside of the eve. So those are the studies. On the, if you go to the renderings, we did, what we chose, our preference was, if we can get to one of the, there we go. We chose the gray as the field color in the gable with the white trim battens, the recessed brick paneling, just above the door, and then the shutters. Was the most appealing to us. And then I implemented that into the streetscape rendering so you can kind of get a contextual view of it. So, and then on the west side of Building 1, we carried a trim band. And the entry, over the fitness room, we raised that to align with the trim band to all line up with the detailing on the front. One other one other element that you can't see in this view, we moved the meter bank that was on the north side of Building 1 to the east side of Building 1. We did, some of the other items that we took in, we got rid of the storage rooms that were on the front, on the stair, within the stairways to give the front, basically the street-facing windows would bring the light into the stairways, into the stairways for each, all three buildings. Sorry if I'm jumping around too fast. So those are the old color elevations you just shown. Right, so that's where the meter bank was, yeah? And while we're looking at it, you can see the comparison of the way we had the brick terminated underside of the second floor window and all the entryways that, as you can see, goes all the way up.
For the record, Todd DuMay, Town Planner, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Hill. Was there anything else, Mr. Hill, that you'd like to comment on that you've tweaked the plan since that last meeting? Or are you ready to receive feedback and questions and comments from Drac?
Chris Hill from Blue Moon. No, I think we're ready to receive feedback. I think that covers everything.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Back to you, Mr. Chairman, for pulling of the Design Review Committee members.
The questions, Sheldon?
The following questions. Is there a chance we could see, and this would not make it contingent, but I'd like to see a wall section through the front where we have a lower story of brick and an upper story of siding. I'd just be interested to make sure that something's covering the brick or not. It's a quirky detail that has to be done well or there's trouble forever. Also, is that brick dies in underneath to the siding on the side? I'd just be interested in making sure that we have that properly detailed. That was my only question. Thank you.
This is Chris Hill with Blue Moon Design. Would you like me to verbally address that? Now? Okay, so the plan of, they return, so the returns, just if it's not, it may or may not be clear from this. Both the returns of the main entry feature do return all the way into the inside corner. So there is full, it's not just a brick veneer on the face. It does wrap into the inside corner of the porch. So the first deck joist, basically the deck joists would run front to back. The detailing where the brick is underneath a porch, we would have the ledger, there'd be a flashing detail that flashes over top of, there'd be a membrane flashing over top to cap the brick underneath the ledger. And then there'd be additional flashing just above, that goes from the, where the ledger is meeting the building, where the flash would go over the ledger and the joists before the decking gets applied.
Sheldon, I'm sorry. You can respond, Sheldon.
It appears to me that Mr. Hill has understood that he's got a lot of flashing to do. That was really my main concern and I appreciate his response. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member? Comment? Question? You?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hugh Schweitzer. I am pleased with his very responsive action on the client's part and I like the approach they've taken out of the three studies that he's developed. Thanks.
Oh, Sheldon?
Sheldon Crosby, Drac. Mr. Chairman, I would like to compliment the architect on removing the storerooms from the entryways to allow more daylight into the halls and stairwells. I think it's an excellent move and I think his residents will greatly appreciate that effort. So I want to please pass my thanks on to him for that.
Thank you. Ray, do you have any questions, comments?
Ray Delito through the chair. I agree with Hugh Schweitzer and Sheldon Crosby. Thank you.
You, Kimberly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a clarification, and I'm sorry if I missed Mr. Hill's explanation the first time. On the meters, the meter banks, exactly what's happening with those? I know that was a question last time and I know you addressed it, but I think I missed exactly what was happening. Thank you.
Wes, do you want to answer?
Mr. Chairman, Todd DuMay, Town Planner. For the record, I could, since I can't see Mr. Al, I can jump in. Commissioner Parsons Whitaker. So here on the image, bear with me a moment. The banks that were removed, or that larger arrow that I just drew, they were on the north side of that facade. And Drac had commented last time that there was a lot of utility banks, meters there next to some of the entrances of the units and I believe also the amenity space. So since that time, they've moved that bank onto the east facade so it doesn't have that same visual impact as you go in and out of that particular building. If I've got that wrong, hopefully Mr. Hill's able to correct me or verify with a thumbs up or confirmation. And I see a thumbs up, so I hope I answered your question, Kimberly.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Joe Califori, 47 Pratt Street LLC. That's correct, Todd. We moved them to the east side so they wouldn't be visible. It was a good move there. I like that idea and thank you for bringing that forth. I also want to thank Commissioner Crosby for singling out those offices. We're in the front there on the second floor. That was a great pickup and I wholeheartedly agree that we needed light up there and I was very happy you brought that to our attention and we did remove those offices. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Is there anything else the applicant would like to add? Committee members?
Joe Califori, 47 Pratt Street LLC. No, if there's any other questions or other concerns, I also have Jim Cassidy, our civil engineer, on. So please let us know and thank you for all your time and all your input. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Todd, are there staff issues?
Mr. Chairman, Todd DuMay, Town Planner. For the record, just one request for clarification. I think Commissioner Schweitzer had said he was pleased with the client's response and agrees with the client's suggested approach to entrance treatment. Since I did show a number of options, I just want to confirm the image that I have up now. I know it's a little blurry because I viewed in. That was the option, that the brick was taken all the way up to the second story. It kept the gray panel color under the gable and it added shutters and there were two pockets of recessed brick for some additional brick detailing. If the members of Drac could just confirm, that is the option presented, is their preference, just so we can clear, provide clear guidance to the applicant.
Is that so? Yep. And I would entertain a motion. Sheldon, is there a motion to offer?
Under the following conditions, or rather observations, that we approve this project. Let me read this to you because it's a little long and occasionally I stumble over words. But in any event, after review of this application and the related exhibits and after consideration of staff technical comments, the Drac would like to recommend approval for the following. I'd like to note four elements in particular. We think that the relationship of the proposed buildings to the site and adjoining neighborhood is appropriate. Site design utilizes landscape elements and significant setbacks and the architecture's residential scale and use of colors and materials creates a contextually sensitive response for this prominent corner. Furthermore, the applicant's efforts to shift the buildings further away from the adjacent property in the north to reduce their overall height and scale is an improvement over the earlier iterations of the project's design that were associated with prior applications. That's number one. Number two, we think that the, I think landscaping is high quality and quantity as well. There's a good mixture of plantings from street flowering evergreen trees to shrubs, perennials and grasses and effectively utilized to create a well-designed streetscape and appropriately planted screen parking areas. In particular, choosing to preserve several of the existing trees along New Britain Avenue and some of the planting along the perimeter of parking lot is particularly good. We think that there's a nice transition from this project to the neighborhood. We think that the trash enclosure in the storage areas for snow and the landscaping and site amenities will help the overall long-term maintenance of the property. And this is a particular importance to us, making sure that the property looks as good on day 30 as it does on day one. And finally, in addition, which is not necessarily the purview of the Drac, but very important to, I think, all of us is that we want to note that this application is consistent with the Town Plan of Conservation and Development. In particular, the Plan of Conservation and Development's goal of promoting more diversity in housing and encouraging appropriate development, especially in these transitional zones. Thank you.
Sheldon, thank you. Is there a second? Hugh Schweitzer? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Todd DuMay, Town Planner. For the record, so we have a motion and a second. I'll now take a roll call vote. Commissioner Parsons Whitaker.
Approve.
Commissioner Schweitzer.
Approve.
Commissioner Giolito.
Approve.
Commissioner Crosby.
Approve.
Commissioner Gabrin.
Approve.
With that, Mr. Chairman, the Design Review Advisory Committee makes a favorable recommendation for approval to the Town Council on Special Development District Application Number 152 with the four findings that Commissioner Crosby read. And that concludes all agenda items on this evening's meeting.
I'd like to issue a thank you to the applicant for a very cohesive, well-put-together project, that important corner, and issue well during construction and occupancy. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, Joe Califori, 47 Pratt Street LLC. I just want to thank you and the commission for all your input and look forward to hopefully moving this on to the council. Thank you.
Welcome. Anything more, Todd, for agenda?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman. Thank for their time and jumping on for a special meeting to get this on in advance of the council hearing in November.
Motion to adjourn? Ray, second? Sheldon? Roll call? Mr. Planner?
Commissioner Parsons Whitaker.
Approved.
Commissioner Schweitzer.
Approved.
Commissioner Giolito.
Approve.
Commissioner Crosby.
He says he thumbs up.
Approved, yeah.
Commissioner Gabrin.
Approve. Thank you very much.
With that, Chairman, the meeting is over. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.